Okay, my name is Arlene Velasco and I will be chairing this meeting tonight. Winston could not make it. So we're going to start with our call to order, which I'll call this meeting now to order. And we'll start with our Public Safety Monthly Reports. It's the Honolulu Fire Department Waikiki Station here. I don't see them on. If they walk in, we'll interrupt the meeting and have them speak. The next on is, let's see, so we're not going to get our fire incident or statistics until they show up. So next is the Honolulu Police Department. And we'll have District Six, are they here? Waikiki Kapilani.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lieutenant Ono from District Six, Waikiki. Just going to go over some stats from February. Robberies, we had one. The previous month was six. Burglaries, three. Previous month, eight. Thefts, forty-two. Previous month, one hundred twenty-eight. UEMVs, four. Previous month, twenty-three. Assaults, seven. Previous month, thirty-two. No sex crimes. Previous month was four. Bike skateboarder sidewalks, we didn't have any. Previous month was two. Speeding citations, we had eleven. Previous month was nineteen. Parking citations, one thousand seven hundred seventy-eight. Previous month was one thousand nine hundred seventy-two. Loud mufflers and prohibited noise, we had one citation. Previous month was three. Park closures, we had sixty-three citations for arrests. Previous month was seventy-five citations, twenty arrests. And total calls for service for the district, two thousand eight hundred seventy-six. And the previous month was three thousand one hundred forty-two. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from people in attendance, in person here? Nobody? Okay, then we'll go to anybody in the video call. Any questions? Okay, I have one question. This, two weeks ago, I was running on Diamond Head and a woman was being attacked by a homeless man while she was feeding her cats. I realize that it's illegal for her to be feeding the cats, but nonetheless, she should not be attacked by a homeless man. So I stayed with her until the police finally arrived. It took them, well, about half an hour. So I would just like to ask that the area be patrolled frequently in the mornings, especially when the cat people are feeding, because, you know, people get irate. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, where was this location?
This was right by the lighthouse at Diamond Head.
By the lighthouse?
By the lighthouse, yes.
Okay. That's District Seven.
Oh, okay, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, bye. Okay, so now we'll go to District Seven.
Good evening, Lieutenant Thompson. Hi, just before we start, what time was that attack, did you say, in the morning?
It was, it was seven-thirty or eight in the morning.
I will let the day watch know. I'll start with the stats from last month for District Seven. There were seven motor vehicle thefts, with eleven reported the previous month. Burglaries, with seven reported previous. Nineteen thefts, with fourteen previous. Two UEMVs, which are car break-ins, with sixteen reported the previous month. Total calls for service for February is five thousand seven hundred forty-six. And let's safety to talk about this month is pedestrian safety. And I'll go over some of the things that are marked in this pamphlet. Use mark crosswalks across the street. A walking person light is on. Do not begin crossing if the red don't walk or upraised hand is flashing or steady. Be careful of vehicles that are turning at intersections. Driver may be looking out for other vehicles instead of pedestrians. If buses or other large vehicles are blocking your view, wait for them to pass before crossing. Do not walk behind a vehicle that has its reverse lights on. And walk on the sidewalk. If there's no sidewalk, walk on the left side of the roadway so you can see oncoming traffic. And you can find additional tips at HonoluluPD.org. More, answer any of them.
I have a question. I have a fun question.
Okay, go ahead.
Lieutenant, thank you for just your report. I have an incident happened very lately in my family. My brother-in-law got an accident in the crossing of Palolo and the McDonald, crossing right-hand turn. So he was in his scooter and he ended up very injured. Now in this hospitalized for spinal cord fracture and so many things going on. So I have a question. Is there anything, know about the insurance cannot cover the scooter hit or anything like that? Then that cover by insurance is scooter. He was riding the scooter.
You know, I can't comment on what the insurance coverage is, because I don't know. And all the insurance policies are different. And then if the person was insured or not, and what kind of policy they had, I couldn't answer that.
But only question for me, the, I was told from my cousin's sister, the insurance told them scooter is not covering any insurance. So is it true or not? But just I'm curious about that.
Yeah, that's a legal question. I'm not sure what. Remedies he could get for that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's no aloha drivers anyway. People get hit behind these scooters really serious. So that's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there any questions from the people attending in-house? Okay, none? Anybody else? Oh, Laura?
I wonder who we call now that Bert Kobayashi has retired when there are big piles of rubbish around Diamond Head? Because he used to do the sweeps.
I'm not sure who Bert Kobayashi is.
Oh, he was our representative, but he's retired.
Well, Stanley Chang is our representative now. But you could also call, I think, the city facilities. Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah, because Diamond Head's getting, it's embarrassing. You know, tourists are coming and looking at that. It's a mess.
Yeah, it's a mess. Okay, let's, let's go on. So no other questions? Oh, Noella? Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for my time. Sir, regarding the e-bikes, the mopeds, et cetera, so on and so forth, recently, the headlines this morning were, was that the little seven-year-old little girl died out there by being hit by a car. And she was not wearing a helmet. And she is no longer with her mom and dad. So my question to you is, does HPD have any? Are you guys in meetings about this? Because we live on Diamond Head Road. Many of us do. All the little streets around us. And we are seeing a major increase in this, which is fine. You know, it's a sustainable thing. But the safety issue, I believe, is lacking with Honolulu Police Department, the city and county, and the state in enforcing more safety rules with this. Because it broke my heart to see that in the headlines today, sir. And I say that with respect. And I would hope that there will be many discussions being taken forth on that one. Thank you very, very much.
The mayor asked some orders, I believe, last month. We're waiting for the fine schedule to be put out. But it. For coming. For people to know what the laws are, what they need, equipment required. And the, the department will follow up right to that.
Alright, thank you. I have one more, one quick question. Are electronic scooters allowed on the pathways around Kapilani Park?
Electronic scoot? So certain bike lanes allow for electronic scooters. As long as they're, they're like bicycle type, not like a dirt bike type, they're allowed on.
Okay, maybe we should have a posted miles per hour for those. Because the one was going pretty fast. Okay, alright, that's all. Anybody else? I see another hand. Margaret?
I don't think that the city handled it. It was just, it was just on the news. Now the state is working on it, on the bike issues. You know, the safety thing. Because, and did you guys know that mopeds are only allowed one rider? I mean, I don't think, there are so many people racing around, doubles, triples even. And, you know, that's kind of low-hanging fruit. But for some reason, and I, I get it, that it's, they feel like, we feel like it's dangerous to chase people on bikes. You know, that they'll crash and burn or something like that. But I think the state, just, they just talked about it today on the news that, and they were talking about the, it was in the news about the young girl. She was seven years old. You know, that's ridiculous. She turned right into a car.
Yeah, that's very tragic.
Yeah, but it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Alright, well, anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, then, thank you very much for your information. And now we'll go, okay, thank you. Now we'll go to the filling of board seats. We have two vacancies in Sub District Two. Is anyone here want to fill those vacancies? Oh, okay. Great, you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Anthony Miranda. I am a Kapahulu resident. I live on the other side of the golf course over there in Wynum. I just actually moved into the district a few months ago officially. But I've been coming to these board meetings for about a year now. I live here in Kapahulu and I play, eat, sleep, do all that stuff. I really love it here and I'm happy to help. And in full disclosure, as of two weeks ago, I'm engaged to our representative, Tina Grandinetti. So I understand if that affects, you know, your decision. But yes, I'm happy to help.
Great, well, thank you very much. Curtis, what do we do now?
Would someone like to nominate?
I'll nominate.
Okay.
Sorry, Angie nominated.
Second, Margaret. Second.
Okay, so do we have a vote now?
And then we'll, we'll do a vote if there are no other volunteers or no other interested, anyone else interested in filling a vacant seat in Sub District Two? Seeing none, we'll conduct a roll call vote. As you could say, Miranda or abstain. Allen.
Miranda.
Miranda. Boydell.
Miranda.
Miranda. Asena.
Miranda.
Miranda. Knight.
Miranda.
Miranda. Mattson. Absent. Merchi.
Miranda.
Miranda. St. Dennis. Miranda. Velasco.
Miranda.
Miranda. Welch. Absent. Whitesoul. Absent. Bruce Wong. Miranda. Kendrick Wong. Linda Wong. Kendrick and Linda Wong both absent. Seeing that Mr. Miranda has eight votes, which is exactly quorum. Congratulations. You are now a member of the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board. And then just for time purposes, we'll, we'll do the swearing-in later on in the meeting. But, but please, feel free to grab a seat, yes.
Okay, next we go to Public Interest Reports and Event Announcements. And we have Kathleen from the Board at Water Supply. Thank you.
Aloha, nice to see everybody. I am happy to announce we had no main breaks this past month in your community. Yay! And we're promoting jobs again at Board of Water Supply. If you're looking for a stable place to work, we emphasize the word "stable" in this economic environment. We have jobs in engineering, information technology, customer care, and administrative roles. Yes, we don't pay as much as the federal government, but we were working through COVID, you know, worked through what's going on now. And it's a great place to work. And send them my way and we'll get them booked up in, through the city's HR system. So thank you. Some reports, updates. Diamond Head Fencing Project continues on. No significant changes. We're continuing planting irrigation. Completion is anticipated by sometime the end of March. And at the last board meeting, there were some questions, why not particularly related to BWS? They were water-related. So we just went ahead and got the responses anyway. So sorry, Anton. Don't mean to step on the mayor's rep. We were asked, all showers currently working except number seven. This is by Queens. It was asked that some of the showers are out. So they should all be working except number seven, which is by Queens. Water fountains out on the beach side, one by the aquarium, again, one by Queens. And work orders are in. And we just resubmitted and they will follow up. So most of the water fountains should be working.
I have a question. There are some that were working a week ago and they're not working.
I'm going to ask that you bring that up under Anton's report.
Okay.
I was just being kind last month.
Alright.
I think you asked the question, so. And then they are investigating the sprinkler along Leahi Avenue. And I think Winston brought that one up. And I don't have any other reports. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Julie.
St. Louis High Community. It was, it is thankful. It's thankful that the section of St. Louis Drive that was damaged when Board of Water Supply was doing a repair. It has been resurfaced and it is really an excellent job. And everybody is cute and very happy. And yes, there wasn't a water main break last month, but yes, we have already had one on Bertram.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll report that when I come back next month.
So my question is, can't you be up to today date instead of, does it have to be?
Well, it's just based on what the information they give us. I can ask the guy that pulls the report. Yes, I could do for that current. But the report we get from our field office is usually runs a month behind and I do apologize for that. I'll do the, I'll see what I can do. You're welcome.
Alright, well, any other questions? We have an audience. You come up, state your name.
Samuel Rosman. I give this information to Winston already, but 3045 and 3055 Pulei Circle. There was a lot of water coming out and flowing down the street into the drainage. I saw that a couple of sprinklers were out. I have photos if you need them, so.
3045, 3055.
Pulei Circle, correct.
We will get on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody on the Zoom? Online? Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Aloha. And then I know that we're not going to get any updates from Kapilani Community College tonight. Let's see, we have a Public and Community Concerns and Event Announcements open forum. You have two minutes to express either concern or comment. And if you could try to keep it to the two minutes, it would be greatly appreciated. Anybody in the audience? We have one person coming up.
My name is Audrey Abbe. I'm with the Kamaki Neighborhood Board and Chair of the Transportation Committee. On March 4th, we had a very successful joint committee meeting with the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board, Transportation Committee also. We had a good turnout of residents who live in our neighborhood. And we'd like to thank Margaret Merchi, the Chair of the Committee, and also Winston Welsh, Chair for the Neighborhood Board, for being there. Also attending was Roger Martin, Director of Department Transportation, and Brian McKee from the Mayor's Office. We discussed and had presentations on Route, Bus Route 200, the safety issues and the economic impact on Kamaki Town and the schools, residents, and drivers and pedestrian safety on Aloha Avenue. And it was a very successful meeting. I just wanted to thank the Board for having us do this. And we look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to working with the community on all these issues as well.
Hello, I'm Juanita Liu and I'm a committee member, I guess of both boards, but of this Transportation Committee. And I just want to say that this is a wonderful mechanism to combine our efforts. And it's not only just these two neighborhoods, Kamaki and Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Boards, that pass resolutions, but also we went to Palolo Neighborhood Board because the Bus 200 concerns three neighborhoods. It's a circulator that is confined to three neighborhoods. So we collaborated with them to work out an alternative route that we recommend to the city to implement. So I think that this shows the value of combining our efforts rather, you know, because they keep saying, well, we have thirty-six boards we have to deal with or something. But if we combine in our efforts, I think it just makes that much more of a successful effort for what we want as a community.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we all agree with that sentiment. The more we cooperate, the better. Absolutely. Okay, so then next we have. If you have a meeting concern, yes.
Can I make a, excuse me, can I make a comment about Juanita's presentation? It was an excellent presentation. She gave a lot of background information about how it was developed and how it was, you know, no longer there. But the whole idea was to go back to the way it was designed in the very beginning. And my wife and I were there and it was a very, it was an excellent presentation that she, she did, so.
Alright, we have another concern here.
Yeah, I'm curious if there's been any discussion about that little plot of land that's just outside the fence of the golf course. Just seems like a really great opportunity there. I am currently, I think, number 107 on the community gardens waitlist. Just a thought.
Which community garden? Oh, okay. Do you know about the waitlist procedure? Okay. Alright, well, let's see, who would look into that? I could look into that for you, yes, because I part of the Diamond Head Community Garden.
I'm not looking to cut ahead or anything. I just think that maybe that space could be the next community garden plot.
Well, we know that Winston is, really wants to either make it a dog park or do something, you know, for the community with that land. We'd have to talk with, I think, Parks and Rec. Yeah, that's a good point. Anybody else have anything on Zoom? I think I see. Okay, nobody. Alright, then we will go on to, oh, one more.
Hello, my name is Wesley Alki. This is my very first time being here. And I thought, I have a couple of concerns. There's that stretch coming down Wailei Avenue, going towards each one going west on ramp. It's, it goes past like public storage and Hawaii Health Storage, that stretch over there. I think it would be probably a good idea to maybe look into putting speed humps there because there's a lot of people that always speed all the time, barreling through there and before getting to the highway. And it's kind of dangerous to cross the street too, because there's, there's no, there's street crossing, but you got to be very careful crossing because it's people speeding all the time in that section. That's one area that I thought, always thought that it's kind of treacherous to drive there too. And the second concern is, across where I live, there is an additional parking lot that's across the street from our building. And there's also a canal there, you know, for overflow, like if there was heavy rainstorms or water can be cap, you know, caught in the canal. There's a lot of vegetation overgrown. Before, there was a group of people that would periodically come there and then clear out the area, pull out all the junk. But it seems that it's stopped and it's being overgrown there. So there's a possibility that if it's, it's just like in Manoa when they had that heavy rainstorm years ago and caused major flooding in Manoa. Just thinking ahead that, you know, if we did keep up with those kind of things around the island, they'll always be busy doing that year-round guarantee. It's, it's, once you clear out one area, you go around the island, you can start right at the beginning because it's grown again. And plus, there's a lot of homeless that camp out there. And, you know, if they, if a heavy rainstorm came, came down, they could possibly drown.
Yeah, it's a hazard on many different fronts, having to clog storm drain like that. Do you, I think that's a city responsibility. Their facilities and maintenance group, I believe. So we'll, when we get to the city, we'll, do you have an address that they could go look?
Well, I live on 2847 Wailei Avenue, so it's across the street from us. And there, before, there was, used to be, you know, those people that drive around with the label of, you got junk. And they would come over there and start pulling things out of that canal.
Yeah, well, we've all witnessed this winter, that horrible spectacle of all the trash coming down from our streams after the heavy rains. That was deplorable, really. So yes, it's an issue with the city. So thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, thank you.
Arlene, you have Michelle Mattson and Raffia Asena.
Okay, Michelle?
Sorry, I had my hand up for another agenda item that's on map. So please proceed.
Michelle, I couldn't hear what you said. Did you say you want to say something or you don't?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, I had my hand up for another agenda item of a damage task, so please proceed.
What agenda item, Michelle?
It's okay. I'm actually more interested in the Mayor's Representative's report. I just sent downtown an email, and I hope you will see it. So we'll wait until then. Thank you.
Michelle, you know what? You sound, you sound completely muffled. We can't understand you.
Raphia Hasina is online.
Okay. Rafa?
Yes, thank you, Chair Melisco. Just I want to mention, I was in the Traffic Safety and Public Meeting. I really, really want to support this meeting, many more meetings in combination, meeting of our Neighborhood Board combination is very helpful, specifically knowing each other conversation really, really helpful. And it's value strongly our concern. That's my support for in future combination meeting.
Great, thank you. It sounds like it was a huge success. We'll have to keep it up.
True, it's truly.
Okay, anybody else online? All right, I guess I don't see anymore. And now we're going to go to our presentations. We have a presentation from Ross. He here? Oh, he's online. Okay, and he's going to be giving us an explanation on Bill, City Council Bill 46, which is about taxing empty homes.
Mahalo. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair, for this opportunity. Aloha, community and Board members. My name is Ross Isokane. I actually grew up in Kapahulu. I think that's Sub District 3. My parents still live on Edna Street, so really happy to be speaking with you all tonight. I'm presenting as a member of a grassroots coalition. We're advocating for solutions to our longstanding housing crisis. Now, City Council Bill 46, this is co-introduced, and it's a passion project by Chair Tommy Waters, I believe. We believe Bill 46 can help our housing crisis by curbing demand from speculators and outside investors. Now, for far too long, we've allowed outside investors who desire to just own a piece of土地 to bid up and purchase our residential units, taking advantage of some of the lowest property taxes in the nation. Now, to me, that'd be okay, except I believe that hoarding excess property, especially by those who don't even live here, should not be allowed in a crisis. So Bill 46, if adopted, would incentivize those owners of excess property to make them available to residents, for example, through long-term rental agreements. Now, if those owners would prefer to keep their excess units vacant, it's a free country, but they may be subject to a higher tax rate. Now, just for some context on how popular an idea this is, although in the City Council hearings, there have been many testifiers in opposition and in support. Just for context, in a recent survey by Ward Research Incorporated, 74% of Oahu residents support this concept. And I just want to make something clear. The current bill targets outside investors. There are numerous exemptions, including one that relieves local families who own just one extra unit. But if an Oahu resident is an investor in, say, three, four, five excess units and keeps them vacant, they might be subject to a slightly higher tax rate. Now, to date, I'm wrapping up here, five Neighborhood Boards have stepped up and adopted a resolution supporting Bill 46, including most recently your neighbors in Makali Moiliili. I think it's great that your board is at least open to considering a similar resolution for the benefit of Oahu residents. I'll stop there. There's a lot of nuances and details. I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we want to have a discussion before we go into the resolution that we're supposed to vote on today? Any questions? Okay, Angie?
Yeah. Hi, Ross. I think you're still there. We lost you. I just had a quick question. I know that Ernest and Young were the Contracted Feasibility Study Group. I was wondering if they released a report yet, if you knew about that? Because I think they were aiming to have it completed in January, but I wasn't sure about the distribution of it.
Yeah, great question. So the Ernst and Young Consultant, explicitly, you know, if you look at their SOW, they were contracted primarily to help with implementation or a potential tax. This is the same study group that helped with Vancouver Tax, actually. So they're very familiar with it. They will be looking at feasibility and some numbers. To answer your question specifically, the preliminary findings haven't been released yet. I believe the report they have until, I believe, July or August to issue their final report. So no, nothing has been released yet. I did hear earlier in a council hearing that potentially they were looking at maybe the end of April to release some preliminary findings.
Can I follow up with that? Okay, so then I also know that for Bill 46, there was, I believe in December, the deferment because they wanted to hear back from the study. Do you know of the current, the current status of the bill at the City Council as they await the study? Like where is it? Do you know?
Yeah, and to answer that, it's currently awaiting third reading. Chair Tommy Waters did defer the third reading because many of the council members and many members of the public, those, those who are, you know, hesitant or even in stark opposition to this bill. They wanted to see at least what the study would show. Now, my understanding is Chair Waters, I don't believe he's going to be looking. I'm not part of the council. I'm not part of the city, so, you know, you can ask Chair Waters this. But my hunch would be that the council just probably isn't in a rush right now to bring it up for a third vote, given it is budget season right now. So I think there's going to be some time. Right now, these board resolutions that, again, five Neighborhood Boards have passed a resolution just supporting the concept, you know, I think it's just a conceptual resolution right now.
I have a question. Did you look at basically limiting the amount of property taxes you can place on owner-occupied homes? Because if you're in an owner-occupied home and you limit the amount of property tax, say 2% annually growth per year, then that would limit property taxes placed on owner-occupied homes. And then investors that come in and have two, three, four, five homes, they would be subject to a higher property tax. Was that looked into?
Yeah, so I, again, to reiterate, I'm not part of the City Council. When I do listen to City Council hearings on budget, especially, my understanding is this council has looked at a host of different property tax reform ideas. I know they're definitely looking for ways to relieve the burden on all of us as residents, whether that's increasing the owner occupancy exemption, whether that's, I think, giving, giving a break. I've heard of an idea to give a higher tax break to owners that commit to long-term residence, long-term rentals, for example. So they are looking at different ideas. Bill 46 is just one that I'm personally passionate about, just as an individual resident. I've been passionate about this for a long time, just because I've looked at the impact that speculators and outside investors have on our housing crisis. I don't think it's fair. This is just my personal opinion, and this is why I'm advocating for Bill 46, which is modeled after ordinances in other cities around the world.
But what I've looked at was similar to California's Proposition 13, which limits the amount of property taxes that can be annually charged to a homeowner.
I think that's a great idea. I'd be for that. I mean, personally, if we can relieve tax burdens on our local residents, I'd be for that. But, but of course, I know the City Council has to balance a lot of things, and they're looking at a lot of things, but they also have a budget. The mayor just proposed a budget, I think, earlier, that's $400 million over last year's budget. So, so again, they want to relieve local residents. That's what they've said during hearings. We'll see what they can accomplish.
Anything else? Anybody else in person? Have a question or comment? How about online?
This is a terrible bill. Tommy has tried to pass it three times. It has had, it will have such adverse effects on local people. In my opinion, it's a total money grab. There are lots of ramifications for people, you know, Papuna, you know, if they have to go into a, you know, assisted living. I mean, it's, 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 there are so many different things, how it's going to hurt people. It's not just for the rich people either. It's for everyone. And it's not, you know, it's just a really bad idea. I'm sorry, I've studied this. I know this, that, I know the, the issue back and forth. You know, it's not, it's a total money grab. And people shouldn't have to be, you know, people work a long, you know, long, long time, and some of them invest in property, and I'm talking about local people. And why should they be, have to, you know, be subject to laws saying that they have to rent their property? You know, if their family comes in, sometimes, you know, they come in from the mainland. They want to have a, you know, a second home for, for gatherings, people. One of the girls that I was listening to said that her mom has, you know, is an assisted living. She lives on a poor lock. She rented a little, her bottle, a little studio so she could be close to her mom. And it's like, it's, it's nuts. I'm sorry, we can't support this. And I'm probably going to get fired, but I, it's so bad. There are all sorts of adverse ramifications, and he had to put like 15 amendments on it.
There's a lot of amendments on the bill. I was looking at it today.
Right, it's crazy.
Well, I'm sorry.
If it was a good bill, you wouldn't have to make all those amendments.
Okay, let's, let's hear a comment from Ross.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, you don't need to apologize for stating your opinion. We're all, this is democracy. We're all entitled to our opinions. I personally, I have no stake in this other than being a resident. I, I've read it as well. I've read it cover to cover. I've read all the different versions. There are 16 different exemptions, many for the things that you talked about, that your, that your fears are about, to exempt local families that might be, that might own some excess properties. The council has been very conscientious of trying to make exemptions to, to keep that tax from local families. But everyone's entitled to their opinion.
Yes, okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Then I would like to, at this point.
Excuse me, Chair. This is Daisy.
I just want to say, I think there's other ways of helping our housing situation. Of course, it is very difficult. I was on the HHFTC Board too a number of years ago and dealt with affordable housing. It's just that I, you know, I know so many people, like they have a large home in Kamaki or wherever, and they're waiting for their kids to move back. So in the meantime, I hate to see them pay more taxes. I know owner occupant is $350 per $1,000, and investment property is $450 per $1,000. And after a million dollar value goes up to $10 per $1,000. So, you know, it's a lot of taxes that we have to consider. And that, I agree with Margaret. I'm in the real estate industry too. And I just don't have a good feeling about this one. And I know people who've gone into care homes and then came back to their home, and thank goodness, they didn't have to pay more taxes. You know, after a couple of years, they kind of revived their health, and then they come back. I mean, that's for real. I mean.
There's a lot of exemptions.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to state that.
So what, was it Daisy?
Yes, hi, by Chair. Yeah, my question is, how would this be enforced and by whom? We understand local families do need a place to stay, but remember now, they're saving it for their grandkids or their kids or family that will want to come back to Hawaii. And they're the ones that work hard to get these properties and pay all the taxes. Perhaps a better bill would be to just have developers, landlords, et cetera, just lower the prices so that local families can afford. That is the main crux of it. Why make all these exemptions? I have a friend that right now would qualify for one of the exemptions because he can't go back home. He stayed in a care center. So there are things that will apply, but then there are also some loopholes that people will avoid. And who knows, who's going to enforce it? A local family can rent it for a few months or buy it, and guess what? They could, within two, three years, they could sell it to some outside investors at a much higher market price. So there is a lot of focus in this bill. So I agree with Margaret too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody, anybody else on this issue?
I have one more comment. You know, with Proposition 13 in California, I think the problem they had was that it wasn't just for owner-occupied properties, that your property tax could only go up, I think it was 2% a year, and the property tax was based on what you paid for your property. So for those families, like I'm in a generation of home, my grandfather bought that property. Now, I'm not saying go back to 1910 when he bought it, but set a price, a reasonable price, where the property taxes are based on what we paid for the property. And then annually, it can only go up 2% a year. It would protect all the residents. They want to have their homes in Hawaii and their families to live in their home down the road. Think seven generations down the road. So I'm hoping that you can look into that idea.
All right, Ross, is your hand up?
Chair, Vice Chair Velasco, my hands are up.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I would, I moved to adopt the resolution in support of Kapahulu City Council Bill 46, 2024.
Okay, that's where we were at next. Okay. Anybody want to second it?
Second.
And a second. All right, are we gonna? Should we have a discussion now? We've had, anybody else want to? Angie has it.
Yeah, I would, I would like to speak on it if, if I had a second.
Yes, go ahead.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Yes, please speak.
Oh, oh. Well, I support the resolution. I support the bill. We've got to do something to provide more housing. And allowing real estate speculators to hold these properties empty is, is just, we can't afford that. I mean, I know I've, we hear a lot of our neighbors' concerns with homeless people on the street and the critical lack of affordable housing and which compounds the homeless situation. So Bill 46 has a lot of exceptions, a lot of exemptions, so that it won't impact local people. It, it doesn't apply if someone's in a care home. It doesn't apply to an Ohana unit. It doesn't apply if there's, there's repairs that are pending, but they can't occupy the house. But they are, they are going to repair it, and they have a, they have a building permit pending or they have the, the construction pending. There's, there's, there's like a dozen different exceptions on it to handle all the concerns that people have raised. And, and I think, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't catch everybody that way. I mean, it certainly, people can find loopholes and get out of it, but I think it would help our housing situation by either raising more revenue to support affordable housing or encouraging property owners who leave their, their property vacant to either sell it or rent it so that somebody can live in it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Angie?
Yes, I have a question about this resolution. I don't know if this is a technical thing or this is up for the discussion, but the resolution that's in the Google Drive, there's this little spot at the end that says like, insert board action, where it says, "If it finally resolves, that the copies of the resolution be transmitted to the mayor." And that's good and all, but then right under it in brackets, it says, "If adopted by the board, information details on related board action." And so my question is. And so my question is, is that necessary or is that just left in? And I know that's a technical thing, but I didn't know if there is any more action we went in to amend to it.
Um, I.
I don't know the protocol on that.
It, it looks like it's a mistake. I could be wrong.
Okay.
We could strike it.
I am raising my hand, Vice Chair.
Okay.
Uh, that's a, the items in bracket would be replaced if you adopted by the results of your vote. Um, that's, that's standard protocol.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Vote.
Um, we're voting on the resul-
Madam Chair.
Somebody in-house wants to comment. Uh, yes, after this first.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding, so you collect all this money. Uh, what percentage is actually gonna go to providing housing? Because it's sort of like the hotel tax. I remember when they first introduced that. And the money went to general funds rather, you know, there was an expectation that it would go back to the visitor industry. So I heard it was something like twenty percent would go to housing. Is that true or not? I mean, if you collect these taxes for this empty homes, uh, tax, what percentage would actually go and how would it go to providing additional housing? Or would it go to general funds?
Vice Chair, I'd be happy to answer, but.
No, I don't have the answer. Do you have the answer?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer. I'm just, uh, wanna make sure I don't speak without being recognized. So, so my answer to that is, when I read the current draft of Bill forty-six, uh, to answer the, um, the question. Right now, the bill just gives somewhat of a pledge saying that, that, um, you know, there is a desire for the funds to be raised to go to affordable housing. They're not earmarked right now. Uh, no, no, I know the city council has been a lot of, having a lot of discussions. It is budget season. There are costs rising in a lot of places. So there's a desire, I believe, to have some flexibility going to the general fund. But when, when I listen to this council, they've been very pro-housing council. They've been looking for different ways to build affordable housing. So while it's not earmarked, I know that they have at least pledged vocally, uh, commitment to affordable housing.
All right. Thank you. Michelle?
I'm hoping you can hear me at this time. Is that correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, there's something wrong with my video. Um, okay, this Bill forty-six. Um, this works to cross purposes. There are many of us who have built and invested, invested in our properties and built our homes or rebuilt old homes into new homes for ourselves, for our, our living purposes, local living purposes, contributing to the community. Everybody knows that I am a member of the board. Um, and I do not intend to have my family sell this property. This is a multi-generation property for my children, for my grandchildren, as they choose to be here. They do not live here right now. They're all in major professions on the mainland. But they come over here and they stay here and they love it. And when they retire, maybe in ten or fifteen years, um, one of them will come over and inhabit this property. Or several will come over during their, uh, necessary vacations and learn about the culture here. This is what I want to leave to my children. And to have, uh, a bill with a property owned by a dedicated owner dedicated to Oahu and the Hawaiian culture. Um, taxed to the highest degree because the owner may not live in the property. Or may no longer be here, but their offspring are and their grandchildren and, and hopefully great, great grandchildren. But we have ush, on the other side of the coin, we have offshore investors that love to flip properties. We cannot condone this. Um, this bill must be revised to define and regulate local owners, family owners, family properties versus properties that are being exploited and built for, uh, highest and best investment use. Um, extortion, yes. Extortion of our taxpayers. So let's provide affordable housing. What we've seen lately is not affordable. It is market, even at a hundred and forty percent of AMI average medium income. Low income affordable housing is what is needed. Our homes on our, our three point five, five, seven point five, ten, twenty. These are private homes. They have to be defined as private homes, not as homes to be sold to the highest bidder. So this bill must cover that. And for that reason, I cannot vote in support of the bill as it is written. I want to see a lot more definition in this bill for local property owners, just as Board Member Wong stated, for his family and his future generations. Single-family properties in Kaukulu, which we voted against, multifamily of four and, four and six-story housing for affordable housing because these owners held their properties, a single-family housing for at least two generations to turn over to their families, not to be sold. I support Board Member Wong. I actually support, uh, Board Member Murchy because she sees both sides. And I'm waiting for a better bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, do we have, is someone else's hand up right now? Who's, who's, um, online?
Uh, the drafter of the bill is willing to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Tommy. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Aloha, everyone. By the way, thank you, Ross. I think you did a really, really good job explaining the bill. But I wanna encourage you folks to actually read through the bill and all the exemptions that we put in there to try to take care of local families. But the fact of the matter is, we are in a dire, dire housing crunch here. Yeah, according to the Department of, uh, Business and Economic Development, it came out with a housing study back in two thousand and nineteen. Back then, we were behind twenty-five thousand units. Yeah, in order, we were paying one point one million dollars, um, for a, a, a family home, right? That's just crazy. The idea behind the bill is to try to take the empty homes and get them into hands of local families. Yeah, so if you have an empty home, please rent it out to another local family. If you do that, the tax doesn't apply to you. By the way, we estimate there's somewhere between twelve thousand and eighteen thousand empty homes on the island. If we're even able to convert a portion of these to rentals, we solve a huge problem with this, this shortage. Yeah? Um, the idea really isn't to tax people and try to money grab, as Margaret Munchie is saying. The idea is to get these homes into local hands. And if you sell it, that's great. Sell it to a local family. Don't sell it to an outside investor. The reason why these folks are investing in Honolulu is because our property taxes are amongst the lowest in the country. We pay point zero three five percent. Point zero three five percent, not even one percent. Where a lot of these investors are coming from California and other places where their property taxes are double, triple, and quadruple what Honolulu residents are paying. Of course, our property values are high, so it, it seems like our property taxes or rate is high. But it's not. The rate is low and it's a, uh, it's, it's a free fall for those folks from outside to come in and invest here. Now, consider this. The city council, since I've been on, on the council and since I've been the chair, we've approved over twenty affordable housing, uh, projects, but only three have been built. We cannot build our way out of this problem. We gotta think out of the box and figure out how to solve this housing crisis. This is not the silver bullet, but it's just one arrow in our quiver to try to get these homes into local hands. I will tell you this, and Margaret, you complained about all these exemptions. But as Ross accurately pointed out, we put in these exemptions to help local families. So if you have a homeowner's exemption, this does not apply, apply to you. If you own a second home, like a beach house, that many families or, not many that I know, but I've heard there's lots of families who own second homes. If you own a second home, but you're a local resident and you have a resident and you have a homeowner's exemption, that first home that you have, that you're keeping empty, the tax doesn't apply to you. I call it the Mr. Kurota exemption. Mr. Kurota came and testified and said, hey, he turns out to have multiple homes. So his second, third, and fourth empty home will be taxed unless he rents them out. But if you have a second home that's empty, right, like grandma's home that you just can't sell, you're good. That tax won't apply to you. If you're a caregiver, as an example, and you're not living at home because you're taking care of grandma, grandpa, auntie, or uncle, and you're not living in your home, it doesn't apply to you. If you're in the military and you are on deployment, it doesn't apply to you. Really, as Ross pointed out, we're trying to get the outside investors who are coming here, taking advantage of our low property tax rates, oftentimes bidding hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars over asking price. And then just keeping the home empty. That's the guys we were on to go after. Everybody used to, while I walked door to door during my campaign, used to complain to me about Kakaako and all these apartment buildings that are, that the lights are off at night. Those are the guys we're, we wanna target. And how do you target them? You cannot, under the constitution, you cannot say foreign buyers cannot come here and buy. You cannot say somebody from the mainland cannot come here and buy. And I get it, Realtor. You wanna be able to sell the house. You make money every time you sell the house. I get it. I get it. But guess what? If people actually sell their homes, the Realtors still gonna make money. You know what I mean? So the idea really is to stop the outside investor. Brent and I'll walk for the, uh, Senate, try to get a bill done saying you cannot sell property to foreigners or even from the mainland, you, you would actually try to do. But you cannot, under the constitution, it's not possible. Your taxing policy, and that's the idea. So we are waiting for the, uh, Ernst &amp; Young report. I did actually meet with Ernst &amp; Young about two weeks ago. I invited them to come and present their findings. Um, we're gonna do it probably early April. Um, I, I do know what they're gonna say. And one of the things that, there's two phases. Phase one is, is the juice worth the squeeze? Their words, not mine. Phase two is, how do you actually implement it?
Tommy?
Basically, yeah. Okay, I'll stop there.
This is Arlene. Sorry to interrupt, but we're, um, we have a lot on our agenda. And we, we would like to vote on this. I have a simple, simple, quick question, though. Rental pricing control, is that gonna be done in conjunction with this bill? Because if you free up these high luxury, empty condos, condos, for instance, in Kakaako, and they want to rent them for, you know, four thousand dollars, that's not though, that's not gonna help our housing market.
Yeah, based on the Ernst &amp; Young, uh, report to me, though, those high-end properties, they're not gonna, they're, they'll probably pay the tax. They're not gonna rent them out. You know, those high-end beach homes on the water, they're not gonna rent it out. What they've found in other jurisdictions is, they simply pay the tax, which is fine. But as long as we use that money and put it back into either the Affordable Housing Rental Fund or other, um, other ways to support affordable housing.
Okay, I think it's.
Madam Chair.
I just have one quick comment.
I have my hand up.
Okay.
Tommy. Tommy, yes, basically, if we give owner occupants the chance to have their property taxes based on what they paid for the property with a basic two percent increase per year, and that would limit what local residents would have to pay for their property taxes. And at the same time, owner occupied means those that are not owner occupied, if they're owned by outside sources, then the, the, their taxes would be higher, as you mentioned. Plus, if they're owner occupied, they will pay their taxes in Hawaii and they'll pay their federal taxes in Hawaii. And so basically, to me, that's, that's a win-win situation as well.
So if you're owner occupied, you pay point zero three five percent. Plus, you get the homeowner's exemption, right, which is, we're even considering raising that. Um, but I heard what you were talking about at two percent per year. I'd be happy to look into it. However, I will tell you, based on the administration's most recent, um, submittal to the council, uh, for their, their budget, which is, you know, three point six billion. If we limited the, the in, uh, property tax at two percent per year, I'm not sure we'd be able to pay for the three point six billion dollars. And again, we're talking about police, fire, ambulance, picking up your garbage, things of that nature. By the way, I, during my talk, I wanna talk about the sewer fee increase because I think you guys should be really concerned about that.
Okay, we will get to that. But right now, let's get, Michelle, uh, do you have a something real quick? You could, you want us to sign in?
Uh, yes, thank you so much. Um, Council Chair Waters. I understand your true intentions of serving our community and listening to, uh, public concerns. However, we must focus this bill on offshore exploitation, not local residents. You've got to separate the two. And you're talking about first responders and all the taxes that are needed. And, you know, we've got to support our local government? Well, where's all that money going? It's not going to what we really need. It's going to the, uh, the rail to nowhere. And look at the overbuilt structures. Look at the overbuilt structures in Pearl City. I mean, these are crazy. What is this exploitation and this government waste of money? And I, I hear you speaking, but I, I can't hear what you're saying. I see you speaking. Um, I agree with, uh, Margaret and I agree with Bruce Wong. I feel that our residents are not protected by this bill. You've got to do more to protect the residents in all.
I believe it or not, I agree with you. And really, the idea is to target the offshore investor. That's why we put so many exemptions in there to take care of local families. You know, there's another testifier saying there's too many exemptions. The fact of the matter is, exemptions are to take care of local people.
Okay, Tom, we're gonna go to one more question from Laura and then we're gonna vote.
I would like to see and hear more about the sixteen amendments. I'm not ready to vote on this. I don't think we know enough yet.
Okay, okay, it was it was on the drive. Okay, let's have a vote.
Voting on the empty homes tax resolution. Allen.
No.
No. Boydell.
Aye.
Aye. Hacina. Hacina.
No.
No. Miranda.
Aye.
Aye. Knight.
Aye.
Aye. Mattson.
Abstain.
Abstain. Murchi.
No.
No. Saint Dennis.
Abstain.
Abstain. Velasco.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Welch. Absent. Weitzel. Absent. Bruce Wong.
Abstain.
Abstain. Kendrick Wong. Absent. Linda Wong. Absent. On a vote of four ayes, three noes, and three abstentions, the resolution is not adopted.
All right, thank you. And the next presentation is a Traffic and Safety Board Committee report. And it doesn't say, is there someone who's going to present that? Or was the discussion held previously? Margaret?
Ms. Murchi.
Sorry, okay, this is, let me get my little report out. It was really a good presentation or meeting. We had about fifteen people there at the Comique Library. We don't have the minutes finalized. Audrey did a fabulous job. And the ladies that did the presentation on the bus routes did another stellar presentation. Kendall Wong said it was the best he'd ever seen. Roger was there. The mayor's representative was there, and Roger also had another office member there. I guess Brian McKee was from them. And anyway, the presentation was done with regard to the notification of the new bus route given late Thursday. And anyway, the bottom line is they're gonna take another look at it. And Roger actually said that probably, because they said, how did you come up with the route from Market City around the perimeter of Comique to KCC? And Carol had mentioned that they had not been, Carol Hachiko, from the dean of KCC, had said that they were not consulted and she didn't, they didn't, when she asked students, they kind of missed being able to go into Comique, because I guess the only bus now goes from Waikiki straight down Wailei to Kahala Mall. And so there were a lot of people that use the bus that can't get into easily into the Comique Business Center. And she said that kids used to hang out at the library after school and stuff, and they don't see that anymore. So it's not really serving the community. And they are gonna take another look at it. And let me see, what else? Olahea, one thing that was mentioned was they had at one point, prior to the bus route being changed to the on that street, they had requested the central line be drawn for the two lanes. And the city came back and said, no, it was too narrow a street to put to put a lane divider on it. I thought that was kind of interesting. But anyway, it's detrimental to the economic sustainability of Comique Town. People, and there was a lady there that was ninety-five years old and just stopped driving on her last birthday. And now she has to walk a great distance to, you know, get anywhere, to get to town. And it was, it was really, it was, it was they did a great job with their presentation, and I think that we are, that they are gonna take another look at, you know, rerouting that route. Because Olahea is bad, it's got blind spots, it's narrow, and it is kind of dangerous. And they were also, we also talked about the rerouting or the redrawing of the streets with access like from Monserrate to Pico. Pico, is it not Pico? But anyway, apparently now we've got, you can't make a left turn, or you can't make a right turn, you have to go. And it backs up on the streets. That's not a bus thing, but it's a traffic thing. There was another fellow that had, from Kool-Aid Circle, that had said that it's a dangerous, you know, dangerous change, and so they're gonna take a look at that. We will have the whole, you know, we'll have the whole presentation put in the when Audrey approves that it will, even, I mean, even Anton said he didn't understand the changes in the road. You know, it just, it didn't make sense.
I have a question, do you have a date for the next meeting?
Not, no, not yet. We don't have any her back unless Audrey has from Roger. But I think that they are, I think that there was somebody from DOT or PBR that was going to do a presentation next month. But we definitely need to get a handle on what's going on. And there was also talk about how the left turns that are, you know, at not, you know, signals and not signals on Wailei Avenue, backup traffic every day. So there were, you know, there were lots of things brought up, and I'm not very succinct here. But it was a good meeting. And I think Hacina will agree, and it was great that we put the neighborhoods together.
Great, thank you very much. Any any comments, questions? And we talked about this earlier as well. So I think this has been great report. Thank you very much, Margaret. And now we're gonna move on to the
Madam Acting Chair. Madam Acting Chair. I would, I would like to know if there is a meeting summary or minutes from this meeting. I think it would be very valuable if somebody recorded it and put it into we're not having a lot of success with AI, but it's instantaneous minutes that we can review and correct based on our own notes. And I think, you know, we just completed that for our joint meeting, Traffic and Safety, Planning and Zoning, and Environment. So we need to look at that, because the Neighborhood Commission Office is just not giving us complete information with their minutes.
Okay, Michelle, I think Margaret has a response for you.
Okay.
You're muted, Margaret.
We did have minutes prepared, but Audrey wanted to review those for accuracy. And so they will be, I actually submitted them to Curtis, but then I asked him to put them on hold when she asked me to just, you know, wait until she had looked at them. So it's all good.
Mahalo, Margaret.
All right, thank you. Okay. Well, I, we're already kind of, we want to get to the city council, and if it's something that can be addressed with the subcommittee. Okay. All right, thank you. City and county reports, we have the mayor representative. Anton?
Yes.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I, you know, I have to apologize about the last meeting last month. I was at a neighborhood board meeting in Kapahulu. And then after that, I got on the phone and was on your meeting, but I couldn't figure out how to unmute. And later I found out it's not hit the unmute button, it's at star five if you're on the phone. So I apologize, but I did attend in spirit, but didn't give my report. So in this month's report, quickly, the mayor, you know, each month he puts out his newsletter, and the highlights for that newsletter is the art initiative that came out. Also, something that I was very involved in is the Kuma Olahau shelter that we just opened up in Ivalae. It's very different, and it's quite unique in what it does. I would just say, if anybody on the on the board or members ever want a tour of that, I'd be, you know, if you contact me, I'd be glad to do that. We're seeing something really different in terms of healing people in that, in that. At the same time, we also announced a new Director of Homeless Solutions that kind of fills into my department for a position that was open, so Roy Miahera. And he reports to me, and maybe I can bring him to one of our meetings and introduce him to all of you. But really, still, those homeless solutions are still under my purview. So you have your lines to me on that. The FEMA updated flood insurance rate plan is in the newsletter. And we got designated Honolulu as a bicycle-friendly community, and it talks about the things we're doing to improve. So if you haven't seen the newsletter, you know, we always suggest that you go look it up. To some of the questions that were submitted, one question was about the Alaui Canal Flood Risk Management Project, what's the status? And DDC, they don't have any updates for us, they're still waiting direction from the USACE. There were, there was questions again about homeless encampments on Kapahulu Avenue, and also by the golf course. And, you know, we're, we're working, I think we got some signing jobs, so we can do some enforcement there. We're working with Enterprise Services. We don't know if we're gonna bring a solution there. I know I brought it up a couple times, and if you want me to get on the agenda as a presentation, I could present to you. I know I'm presenting it to the Waikiki Neighborhood Board as one of the potential things we could do or not do as a way to work on that. If, you know, one of the speakers earlier talked about, there's a whole bunch of homeless here. You know, send me a note and let me know how many and where they are. You know, there are a lot of pockets of places that we need to look at, but there's also areas in the community that, you know, we have cleaned up and housed people, or they've moved. So just make sure, we're very open to take your input. I always ask people to stay current with me, though. Don't tell me how many people were there three, three months ago or a year ago. I really need to react to what's there now, and we can bring some work. There was erosion along the Diamond Head coastline. I think you've seen some of the work that's been going on. DDC responded in that meeting that they're meeting with DPR on the Leahi Beach Park. And they're, they're working to make an assessment. They don't have a plan in place that they're in the assessment phase. But then the one section along the beach, you know, the work started there. So we've seen that work. I went down to see that. Further updates, the wall collapse. There were requests about the bus stop and stuff that's on my list, but you're having very detailed meetings, one of which I've joined with your Transportation Committee. That is the best way to get great access to Roger and his team on detailed pieces on transportation. So I'd ask you to continue that. And Michelle, I have taken your pictures, and I am presenting them. I'm working hard on the Diamond Head Slope. So I've got plans in place with the state and city. We're trying to finalize them. You know, I've got people working on them, so I'm working hard on that. Thank you for the pictures, they were very helpful. I've gone up and worked there, walked there myself. My goal, if I can get this done, is to make that a place that's a national park, and we're not gonna let anybody be there. The fire hazards and things like that. So I've taken that to heart and personally am walking that through the administration. So wish me luck. That's the end of my report, Arlene.
Oh, great, thank you. I think when I'm looking at the list that it's on the agenda, you address I just want to mention the Kamata Beach Shower still isn't draining, and it's so heavily used now by tourists and locals. It really, we really should have a functioning shower there. And then I would like to know, I did talk to the couple of the people that are on the nonprofit Kool-Aid Cliffs, and they relayed that a couple of the maintenance people from the city have given them a hard time, kind of threaten them about the work they are doing there, clearing off the invasive trees and putting in other kind of trees and grass. And the area looks a hundred percent better, and it's it's visited by so many tourist buses. I mean, I see at least eight every morning, you know, in a given fifteen minutes. So it's heavily used, it's a beautiful spot, and I'd hate to discourage Kool-Aid Cliffs from keeping up the good work.
Yeah, we support that very much. It's a very nice effort.
Madam Acting Chair.
Okay, hi, Michelle.
Thank you. Anton, thank you so much for your dedicated responsiveness. You are unique in your capacity to communicate with our board. And I am personally very grateful for your interaction. Regarding the the entrenched transient encampments that include drug dealers and house burglars on Diamond Head and that cut kiawi wood for firewood for their campfires leading to in high winds and dry grasses, which are natural to the semi-wilderness historically designated environment of this Diamond Head natural, natural, natural national landmark, a national designation, as well as a state designation of a state historic monument. The natural grasses are part of the semi-wilderness environment. However, the entrenched transient encampments are not part of that environment, and they are on the verge of destroying that. We've had many, many HFD Honolulu Fire Department responses to such open fires. And fortunately, they've been able to be contained. But I did send you a detailed email about Honolulu Fire Department's report to us in the form of a chart with dates and locations of these open fires last April, from February to April 2024. We have not received such charts since. We've had this on our agenda as a notice. The HFD, no response. There was, when I filed a, an online request to HFD, they gave me general a general summary of numbers of fires from April to August. I sent this information to you in the hopes that you would, I don't know if you can communicate directly with HFD, but as our neighborhood, our city's Neighborhood Board Representative, I really think that you're our last resort, and you're our most responsible and dependable resort at this point to get this information in this chart form, so we can analyze as a board what is happening on Diamond Head, and summer is right around the corner again. You can see that any campfire, any open fire in high winds where helicopters cannot respond with their water tanks. And those embers jump, just as they did on Maui. And they jump around Diamond Head in high winds to Kahala, Comique, Kapahulu, neighborhoods, Diamond Head neighborhood, to be on each park, and over to Waikiki, another mahino waiting to happen. I may be exaggerating, but we've got to look at this as the ultimate mitigation of this concern. These people, these people need to be relocated in whatever way, in whatever sensitive, fair way. They cannot, no longer be on Diamond Head, and I think State Parks is taking this under their hands. I feel speak with group patrol, the administrative of State Parks, he already has a contract to look at this. So please.
Michelle, I completely agree with you. You, you, you know, if you, if you know all the people that I've walked your presentation through, I think that, that, you know, we're at the highest level. Um, I think that, that, you know, we're at the highest levels, the, you know, everybody understands there are a lot of complications with homeless and what you can do. But I think with the, you know, with the recent Supreme Court decision enforcing our laws is, has been supported. So that, you know, there's been a process that happens where the state and city have to collaborate to, to, uh, do enforcements at Diamond Head. But that being said, not only are we going to do that, the plan, the plan is to change the narrative of what's happened. So we don't move them and then they move back. We're going to let them know that this is different, that the enforcement is different. And, um, we haven't finalized the plan. Roy and I are, are, are meeting with all the parties so we can construct. There'll be a, uh, one enforcement at the end of this month, but that's separate from the really all out plan to see if we can just take, say Diamond Head is just not allowed. And so, um, that's my goal. I'm going to try to do it. I may or may not succeed, but I'm fully on board with everything you said and I'm going to do all I can, uh, to make that happen.
Well, Anton, just let us know. We'll give you the most support we can generate to, to get this done. And also with Kirk Control at State Parks, I've spoken with him and, uh, please speak with him. He's got a contract now and Diamond Head is his, his focus point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have a, a question from Angie.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, and forgive me if this is not your area, but I was just curious. Um, cause I had seen a recent article about everyone scared about the federal funding. And I was wondering if you knew that, that had any effects. I know they were talking about D O T with the highway, because that's a major federal one. But for D T S with the complete streets, I guess my question is really twofold, but the first one is, um, the Wailei and First Avenue intersection by the surf shop. That's the one. Yeah. That one is incredibly dangerous because there's a tiny little stop and then another red light right there. And even just two days ago, I was coming home from St. Louis Drive. And literally a minute after I passed, there was a major accident right there. Because there's a lot of people trying to make left-hand turns coming from St. Louis, going to Waikiki. And it's a spot that many people do not stop at despite there being a red line or a red light. And so my question is, I know before, did you any like, what is it? Any interventions? They have to do a study and that has to do with complete streets. So I was just curious. One, if you could look into that intersection because it's really dangerous, but also if there is any kind of, if anyone was looking at the funding for the complete streets in light of the new administration.
Right. So, you know, your, your question gets very, very small Angie, where you're talking about a particular place. And you're right that, that, uh, transportation has to study that because, you know, one decision can create another problem, right? And so, you know, there's multiple decisions involved in that. Um, and your transportation committee, now we've done a good job after a few months here of getting a direct contact, you know, with the, with the department to look at particular situations. To your bigger question, um, on complete streets and funding, it may not be as much a funding issue as an attitude issue of, of how this administration of, wants to approach it, right? They may want to go a different way and that's what could take complete streets away and start a different kind of study, but, but none of that's been declared. Um, and, and in many ways, you know, like my department has a tremendous amount of federal funding. And, um, so the, the city, what we've done is we've put some money aside so that if, if certain things are happening and, and some of the people, at least in the city, so that we can start up whatever news is going to happen. We have a way to go up to our managing director and say, these, this is being affected by federal funding, uh, withdrawal. And then we can put that in and take a look at it. Um, I didn't propose right now, we have, you know, a hundred and twenty-two million that, uh, that goes into is federal funding. That much of that ends up in the community. We didn't put anything in the budget for that yet because we don't know what will happen. And the plan would be that, uh, you know, we have a look, we have some money set aside for the individuals to keep in their job. And then after that, if something happens, then we're going to escalate that and, and meet with our budget guys and see what the city can do. Um, because the, the full-on budget is kind of full on out on every, everybody, right? So, you know, I've done corporate restructurings before and, and this is more like a corporate restructuring than a normal government restructuring. And so, you know, there will be a picture on the other side, like the picture may not have complete streets. It may be a different way of approaching it. Um, you know, the, the, but there will be something and then we may have to reform ourselves to then maximize what we can interact with the government in that new picture. Uh, but right now that we're in the turmoil stage and so everybody's, you know, their, their fears run, nearly extrapolate. And you, you really have to wait to see what emerges, right? Um, you know, if there's a lot of cuts in individuals in the government, that can be two things. It, you know, I, I can't find somebody there to get something done that I want to get done to give me the funding. Or maybe now with fewer people, I don't have to go through four people to get it. So, you know, it's, we have to see. Um, and, and I've heard rumors about, uh, complete streets, but it, noth- nothing has been decided on. So, thank you for your question, Angie. And thanks for coming to the opening of the shelter.
Thanks for coming too.
All right. Thank you very much.
I think there might have been a community that had a question.
Do we have a, anybody in the house? Okay. How about, um, online? Daisy.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, thank you, Director. You always answer the questions as best as you can. My question is, I wrote the newest bus system, the buses, they're beautiful, but, um, people don't all understand English. So the message board, it will tell you what's the next stop is, but unfortunately it would help if somebody could announce the next station because there are tourists that don't understand English and may not be able to read. And the message board from the seat I was sitting on today, I could barely see it. I know the stops, so luckily I know where it was, but others would not be able to. So there has to be some kind of, um, adjustment done. Also regarding the, um, in the front where the buses announce what number route they are, could that be changed from blue and green back to white? Or, um, yellow, orange on a, because it's very difficult to see blue on a dark background. So if that can be made, like the old buses, they have it white, then it's a lot easier to see. And, um, that would help a lot. And then I spoke to, uh, this is another question. I spoke to, um, Director Martin about three weeks ago regarding the Ala Wai Bridge update. Um, they did a presentation, Parsons did a presentation at the Waikiki Neighborhood Board on Tuesday. And then they're saying that, um, as soon as the government says it's okay, come this September, they're going to make a bid for a con- consultant slash builder to come in, award it. And then construction according to the Director Martin was starting in twenty twenty-six. He also managed to tell me that the core sample's taken does show that the area where the bridge is to start is very soft. So the runway will be put further back. But at the same time, it's, there's coral underneath that section, uh, coral absorbs water. And we've had problems with cracking in our area of Kapahulu since our homes are built on coral. So that may also cause another problem for the bridge because the bridge they want will still cost sixty-three million. And it won't be the, um, low bridge. It will be the big, um, sailboat type bridge that, um, the city has always preferred. So, um, just an update from D T S Director. But if things can be, um, fine tuned on the new buses, it would really help. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Daisy. Um, thank you, Anton. Is there? Okay. We have one other. Yes. Please come up and state your name.
Hi, my name's Streeta Peasentiner. Sorry I was late. Um, hi ladies. These are my inspiration. I wanted to mention Margaret Murchy was talking about that meeting at the library. And, um, right before that I met you all at, um, Halei Powa. Or is that Halei? Anyway, you know, I'm talking about the old meeting and that was it. I was, I was inspired. I said, this is like Cagney and Lacey. I am hooked. And I think I've been to ten meetings since. So, um, it inspires me to talk to my neighbors and, and get them involved too for whatever issues we have, which never, we didn't have before. Now we have a lot of issues. Um, so I wanted to mention that because I, I agree. Margaret is, you know, saying great things, but I mean, really, I, I'm still in, in awe of your presentation.
Do you have a, a concern or a question?
Um, I was speaking of, of, of a few, I have a few actually. I'm sorry, was I already at three minutes?
Well, I, I was just wondering if you, if you were just.
I thought we were able to comment on what was discussed.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, I was violently assaulted in August by homeless in both Kapahulu area where I live and Kahala, where I have my business and my family's lived since nineteen sixty-nine. I, um, I have over a quarter of a million dollars in medical bills and, um, loss of work, which for a German Austrian loss of work is, is not good. And I wanted to mention from the gentleman, I believe it was Anton, speaking about the homeless. Um, and wondering, apparently, I guess you haven't driven down Kapahulu. And I, I would urge you to, because it's six in the morning or noon or three in the afternoon or ten at night. Um, it's an issue and it's the same people. And I'm kind of the neighborhood watch girl of my area, Herbert and Campbell. And, um, because I think it's important for us to feel safe in our communities. I'm born and raised here and I have never seen such a problem before. So I'm not, I'm just touching on it tonight. I know you're trying to close it up, but, um, I will be going to the mayor's meeting and I will start taking more photos. Although it does sound easier said than done, it's not exactly safe to go out and go cheese. You know, um, these are very abrasive. Um, of course, you know, mentally ill, maybe, uh, high on drugs. And, uh, the consequences, I'm sorry, the lack of consequences is my issue. Uh, the second, uh, assailant, I believe it's, they're called. They're both sent here from the mainland on one-way tickets. Um, they both have over forty arrests in just two years. He took his pants off in front of the preschool. I had called the police, which is exactly what they told me at the mayor's meeting. And they, the lieutenant, everybody came up to me after and, oh yeah, make sure you call them when it's, uh, because I reported some lewd conduct. I want to make sure especially women and children are protected because I wasn't protected at that age. The guy takes his pants off because the cops let him stay there. I don't know why. He had a warrant, I find out later. And sure enough, I get tackled like it's Bill Romanowski on a bad day. And he gets let out. He sleeps right outside of my building. I'm constantly cleaning up drug paraphernalia, garbage, which might be my biggest pet peeve, being born and raised here, right? Um, the, the lack of respect, you're talking about the fires on the slopes of Diamond Head, that's been going on for years. I would run Diamond Head. They were chopping bikes right next to the, the, uh, lighthouse in broad daylight. So I do hope you take it into huge consideration. And when you say, you know, we, we have to be careful with them, we have to be gentle and it's humanity. I'm not talking about all homeless. I'm talking about these criminals that are being sent here from the mainland using our resource. They have no intention of going to a shelter or going to go get a job. They're chopping bikes in my parking lot. They're stealing, they're beating dogs, attacking, uh, residents. So I hope we figure something out because I know what you were talking about, um, on the mainland. I, I'm forgetting the name right now and we don't have enough time, but we need to make time for this because it's atrocious. It's unbelievable. And for small businesses, I'm trying to, I was trying to rent out across the street, the old e-bikes place for over a year. They don't care. They don't care. And the, the law enforcement is far from stellar on that. If they're letting them go and they have warrants and then they're attacking us. Good. I, I have zero arrests, by the way. I made sure. I did that on purpose. I did the right thing. So, you know, please, I hope that as residents and, you know, taxpaying, hardworking people were protected. And that is why I'm here and going to actually several meetings and thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. You missed it, an earlier comment that I saw, I witnessed a woman being attacked, uh, Diamond Head by a homeless person too. This, this a week and a half ago. So it's happening. It's a real issue. Thank you. Okay. Last one, Noella.
Oh, hi. Um, thank you so much for this moment. Um, I would like to, um, applaud Michelle Mattson, uh, the previous lady, Ms. Peasentiner. Uh, we do have a problem all over the place and we all know it. But, um, in terms of Diamond Head, I have to say that, uh, as a resident that lives on this mountain, I, I really have to, um, really emphasize the problem. Uh, you folks are doing a great job of getting this thing, you know, done, but it is a national park. And so i- it should not have these problems at all. Uh, whenever there's, we have problems down at Makalei Beach Park with the mopeds. We've got all kinds of stuff going on and we all know it. But I do have to say that the, the people that actually own homes, wooden structures, cement structures, it really doesn't matter. Uh, those people on Leahi, let's keep it in context of the kingdom. It's a special place and, and I, I, um, I know money's tight. I know things are getting rough. I know all of this and I, we all do. But the deal is that the people of Diamond Head, and I'll be honest, we're getting nervous because, you know, Ms. Mattson and, uh, she said summer's coming and this is when we're all on alert. Many of us don't like to leave our homes because we don't know what's going to happen. And to make sure everything is going to be okay with our homes, but we get very nervous around this time. And I know and I acknowledge the fact that the city and county and the state of Hawaii are trying to do their best to eradicate these issues and God bless you all. But the problem is that we're getting nervous because summer's coming and, and, you know, it, 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 you know, we just got to work harder. I know we can do better and thank you so much. I really appreciate this time to say this. This is not going to solve overnight. You know, it, it's constant. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Noella. Anton, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, as always, thank you for, for allowing me to be at your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. And I am going to take you up on your offer to, to take a quick visit to the, your shelters. And, um, I'm going to be sending some pictures of some cliff dwellings that I took this weekend too.
Excellent. And I'll, I'll go to Jean Albano again on the shower.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next. Thank you very much. Thank, next is, uh, City Council, Tommy Waters. Are you still on?
I'm still here. Thank you, Chair Velasco. Good to see you all and thank you for including me in the bill forty-six debate. You know, it's kind of nice to see democracy at work. Um, yeah, I want, I want to introduce to you Kevin Imanaka. He should be in the audience there. If he could just raise his hand. He's my new chief of staff. So if you can't get ahold of me for whatever reason, please feel free to reach out to Kevin. Also online is Adam Do. Many of you know Adam. Uh, there he is. But Adam Do is online as well and he's available, um, to help you folks in whatever you need. I wanted to point out that in April, we're going to hopefully finish up the primary urban core development plan. As you know, many of you have weighed in on the primary urban core development plan as proposed by the Department of Permian Planning. They wanted to allow six to eight foot stories along Kapahulu Avenue and Wailei Avenue going as far in as, um, Keanu Street on Wailei Avenue and many people from this board and Kamaki objected. I made the amendments to draw it back down to what the existing zoning is. That still needs to go through one more reading in the planning committee and then full council. We hope to wrap that up in April. So if anybody else wants to comment on that, please go to HonoluluCityCouncil dot O R G. And, uh, you can participate or just email my office, Tommy dot Waters at Honolulu dot gov. But again, the amendments that I put. But again, the amendments that I put in were objected to by DPP, but they really came from you folks. You know, there's a saying, "Keep it Kamaki", but I also apply that to Kapahulu. Keep it Kapahulu. And from walking door to door, people told me they don't want 6-8-foot buildings along Kapahulu Avenue. It's really just gonna change the nature of the neighborhood, as well as traffic. Kapahulu Avenue is a very, very well-traversed artery. So anyway, there's that. Just to follow up, one last thing on Bill 46, the Ernst &amp; Young, their report should be presented to the council in April, in April or early May. I'm trying to push them to do it in April, but I'll let the board know so you folks can participate and be a part of that. Anything, I wanted to just tell you folks that we're currently doing budget briefings this week. We've been at it all day, every day this week, where each department comes before the city council and makes their budgetary... Basically, it's a request. The mayor approved each department's budget, and now it has to go through the city council. But it's also your opportunity to weigh in on how city funds, your taxpaying dollars, should be spent. Especially if there's anything you folks want me to add, or delete for that matter. But oftentimes, you know, people have had projects that they want to complete. You may recall, and I know Linda's on the call, but the "I'm on a shower" actually came from your board. And I'm so disappointed as well, that it still doesn't work. And me, Kevin, and Adam have gone down there numerous times to just check it out. And of course, we get an earful from beach users about how poorly it is. One, the showerheads are not very good. And two, the drainage is just horrible. So we'll keep on top of that. I actually had a full-blown hearing on the showerhead at the city council. Parks Department is well aware of it. Department of Facility Maintenance is also very well aware of it. And I'll work with Anton to make sure that we stay on top of it. You know, I did go and visit Kualae Cliffs and the volunteers that organized the cleanups, as well as folks who are doing the cleanups. And I'm a big supporter of theirs. I met with Laura Thielen, the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and she supports them as well. So, you know, I know there's a couple Parks employees who are upset, but the director and from the top is in support, and I am too. So I'm trying to figure out how we can further support them. I know that when you water the plants all day as they do, it takes away from water from the showers of the surfers coming out of the water. So we're trying to figure out a schedule so that everybody's happy. Ocean Safety is looking for a new home. When that more information becomes available, I'll give folks know. But I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from people here in house? How about online?
Madam Chief Chair.
Oh, Michelle?
Yes, thank you so much. Tommy, this is fantastic. You're really in our corner on this. The issue about the premier urban center development plan, we have been so active on in defending our single-family lots from developers coming in with five- and six-story multifamily housing to create the highest density in our single-family neighborhoods surrounding Diamond Head. And if this is allowed, we can only expect it to go all the way around Diamond Head, which is a preservation area. So thank you for holding the line.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate your input. And you particularly were an integral part in getting this done. Thank you.
Okay, well, you might not like what I have to say next. And you know, I'm rather outspoken with apologies. Regarding Kualae Cliffs, they've done a magnificent job in their own interpretation of landscaping Diamond Head slopes. They are also very concerned about homeless encampments, as we all are, inundating the slopes and creating hazards. However, Diamond Head is a designated National Natural Landmark and State Historic Monument. It is designated in the Diamond Head State Master Plan as a semi-wilderness area. So you do not cut down trees. Kualae Cliffs has a certain founding member who is intent on cutting down trees, kiabi trees and whatever, that shade the homeless. That is their objective, encourage the homeless to leave. But you cannot destroy the natural nature, the semi-wilderness nature of this historic asset that we have. So we're trying to work with Kualae Cliffs, with Rio, Kabota, and others. And we've asked them to join our board meetings at the Diamond Head State Monument Foundation, of which I'm president, to work these things out, to understand the preservation issues, to understand the endemic plants that will survive there, and also the invasive plants, such as the kiabis, but that have taken over and do provide a certain characteristic to the monument historically. So we're working with state parks on this, Council Chair Waters. And the foundation is committed. We have a grant from the Hawaii Community Foundation to restore the endemic natural landscaping for Diamond Head. Much, even the naupaka, which was destroyed along Diamond Head Road, which is a designated scenic byway as of 2013, as a result of the foundation's efforts. It's a scenic byway under the National Scenic Byway Program. And we're trying to restore the naupaka that died along the perimeter because state parks cut off the water. But these plants need to survive because of the environment. So they don't need a lot of water, but they need to be acclimated, and they need to learn to survive with less water, which they do. So that's all the scientific explanation. But as far as the environmental organizations, the adoptive park organizations, Kualae Cliffs has taken over the Maoka, I'm sorry, the Makai side of the cliffs. They have re-landscaped those cliffs into a park area with lawns and other, perhaps endemic or non-native species. We're working on the Maoka side with the State Historic Parks Adoptive Park Agreement to restore endemic and indigenous species. So this is a work in progress, but we want to work together in a partnership. Our partners are KCC. They are our volunteer partners under their student learning program, as well as their resiliency and sustainability program. Two different programs by two different directors converging on this project for Diamond Head. And we want to create a partnership with the city. We have a partnership with the state and with KCC. We would like to invite Kualae Cliffs to become part of this partnership. We all work together so we know the history and the correct indigenous plantings that need to be made to make this an even more authenticated historic monument.
Michelle, thank you so much. We have a lot of other representatives here that we'd like to get to tonight. So...
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
How about now? You can hear me. Thank you, Tommy. I'm glad that you've thought more about a lot of these issues and that you finally understand that Kapahulu Avenue and our sense of place in everywhere, you know, subdividing districts, is really important to everyone. And I think you finally understand how much that is, since City Council has taken over DPP's place in the master plan. The Kapahulu Avenue is, it's been known as like an Art Deco street since the 50s, something like that. And it looks good. They keep up the painting. They do, I know Curtis Law, the planning and permitting guy on the Maoka side of Kapahulu Avenue. The only bad thing was that glitch at Popeyes where it affects the signal there. But thank you for finally understanding that we don't want height limits. We want our, DTS came in and put complete streets on Montserrat Avenue, was telling us that they weren't coming, and then they came the next week, you know, right after our meeting, and put all those, now you can't open the car door, the buses won't fit. I mean, it's a mess. So that should serve as a reminder of what, how much you change the topography when we put in complete streets. I'm glad to hear that you're trying to stand in with the Kaimana Beach showers. As you know, I tried my best. But you would think that when you pay $500,000 for a project, they could get, and the thing was subbed out. What was it, Kawashi? He gets a lot of contracts, but he subbed it out. And the people that he subbed it out to messed up the, I have the plans. And the pole and the showers are not up to specs. So they say, oh, Department of Parks and Department of something, oh, Randy, don't have any more money. It should be included in that $500. And I can see you saying that, you know, it wouldn't be a stretch for you. So I applaud you for keeping on track. And because, you know, a girl moved in next door to me, and she's going surfing at Kaimana Beach, and she doesn't like to shower. Nobody, you know. One of the things is it's aerated. I was right about that, Thielen. So they're just not used to that. But, so I'm glad you're keeping on that. And then I guess that's it. Oh, Kualae Cliffs. Now, I saw on our agenda or something, and somebody referred to Kualae Cliffs, the kiabi trees, as nuisance trees. They didn't say nuisance, whatever the correct word is that. Oh, evasive, evasive. So I don't know if that's really correct. But I know when the people at Kualae Cliffs site one, two, and three, they cleaned up, and they do have an irrigation system there. They put in a whole irrigation system where the water, the runoff from the showers, goes down and waters all the plants. And that follows the walkway. So, you know, a lot of thought, and a lot of contractors have helped them, and I'm sure you're aware, and the other monies they've gotten from the Tourism Authority and people, just the regular Joe sees what they've done there. In the beginning, you couldn't see the ocean. Your flat couldn't see the ocean from there. So, you know, I like what they've done. And I really applaud for a community effort to come together like that and become a 501(c)(3), it's great. It's like, you know, out of their own initiative, getting their own donations, doing everything. So I would like to applaud them. And if there is something that's questionable, it's very minor compared to what they've done as a community group that just came together and got more community people and businesses to support them. So I applaud them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Okay, I think we, I think we can, I think you've answered all our questions, and you've given us a lot of information. Tommy, really appreciate you coming here tonight. It's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Velasco.
Okay, and then now we're gonna go to Councilmember Scott Nishimoto. Is he here or a rep?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Kylie. I'm gonna be reporting for Councilmember Nishimoto tonight. As Chair Waters mentioned, it's been a busy week at the council. We have all of our budget hearings this week, so we've been very busy. I just have two quick announcements for this month's report. First is that Councilmember is excited to be co-sponsoring a park cleanup at Asama Park in Palolo alongside Rep Siamah. So we'll be cleaning up that space on Saturday, March 22, from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. So we'd love to have some of you join us if you can. Just feel free to email our office or Rep Siamah's office if there's any interest in that. Also, just wanted to mention Councilmember's eBlast. Again, we send out weekly eBlasts where we cover upcoming events in our community. So if you're interested in signing up, I'll leave the link in the chat. And yeah, if there's any questions or concerns, our district overlaps with St. Louis Heights. So if there's any concerns in that area, please feel free to let me know, and I can pass them on to Councilmember. I'll also include our contact information in the chat as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody in the house have a question? How about online? Let me see any. Okay, thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate you being here. Okay, now we have our federal and state elected officials. And is anyone from US Congressman's Ed Case Office? Okay, yeah, I called this morning. They said they were gonna come. Okay, so now no Brian Schott's representative or Mazie Herona. I think they're pretty busy. Right now, we have, it's Governor Josh Green's representative. Is he here? Okay, it doesn't look like he's here. Okay, then we have State Senator Stanley Chang. Is he here or a rep? No? That's too bad, because I had some pictures to share with him, with some of the condos along the Gold Coast. Senator Lesahara, I think he has a little bit... Oh, he had to leave. That's too bad. State Senator Carol Fukunaga? Nope. I know, I see Tina, you're next. Tina Granchinetti.
Thank you. Just take a quick second, if Chair Waters is still on, to say that my office is really missing Amanda. She did an amazing job helping us get settled in, and we're really grateful to your team for helping us handle constituent concerns in the first few months. So, yeah, we miss her. When we got the email that she was moving on, my office manager and I both ran out to each other like, "Oh", she was great, and I'm sure whoever is taking over for her will be awesome, too. Updates from me, we recently had a big deadline at the legislature. Updates from me, we recently had a big deadline at the legislature. It to housing, two of them focus on supporting community ownership and expanding community land trusts. And the other two focus on renter protection. HPR just did a story that came out today on those bills. I'm really excited about them. As a majority caucus, we have a couple bills moving that I think are relevant to the conversation tonight. One in particular focuses on the issue of homelessness and increases funding to the Kahale Initiative, but also creates a special fund for permanent support. You know, help to address some of the needs around folks who have lifelong behavioral and mental health issues and need that kind of support. We also passed out the House budget. That includes all of our priority areas, but it also includes $200 million set aside in our rainy day fund. And the idea behind that is it's seen as best practice to put away 10% of your state budget for emergencies. And we have been slowly adding to that fund. We're not quite at 10% yet. The problem is that as we're trying to build up our rainy day fund, it keeps raining, right? We have COVID and then now we have the federal cuts. So we've been getting briefings from the Lieutenant Governor and the AG. We have been briefed by Jill Tokuda and Ed Case. And next week, we're being briefed by Senators Schatz and Hirono. All they're telling us is things are looking pretty scary. We're concerned about Medicaid cuts, loss to our federal workforce, and also a lot of state positions that are partially funded by federal funds, as well as threats against the universities funding and a lot of nonprofits that are dependent on federal grants. So the good thing is that in light of so much uncertainty, we received a memo today from leadership saying that the House and Senate have set aside three days for, or three five-day special sessions. So after the legislative session is over in May and the federal budget becomes more clear, we are planning to potentially meet again in August, October, and November, I believe. And we may allocate some of that rainy day fund. We might open up the GIA, reopen the GIA process to provide more support for nonprofits that have been affected by federal cuts and, you know, whatever else arises in between then and now. So as a freshman legislator, it's really intimidating with all of the excited that committed to coming back to work through. We're not gonna take eight months and just see what happens. We're gonna be coming back to the Capitol and hopefully doing some damage control. I think, yeah, that's about it for me here for questions as well.
This is Arlene. I have a question for you. What about the cesspools bills? Because we have cesspools right around here.
They're, I just met with Cesspool Ted today. It was Ocean's Day at the Capitol. So I think there are four bills still moving through the legislature. All of them addressing that issue. I can't remember the details of all, but they're all still alive.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else in house? Anybody online?
Michelle Matz.
Michelle?
Tina, I commend you in your efforts and really support what you're doing. And please give us posted on anything else that you need to report to us, not only in our capacities of many chairs, but as a board as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else online? Well, thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Okay, then we have Jackson Sayama. Sayama? Not here. How about Andrew Garrett? Ikai Olt, how's that? Anybody here?
Representative Olt?
Okay. Okay, we'll go to board business.
Acting Chair, I, I would like to just interject a comment here regarding the the Hawaiian Native Hawaiian representation and Representative Olt. The issue in Kakahakamakai of Oha to take over the last remaining shoreline open space, which is park use and and recreation zoned by the Hawaii Community Development Authority. That bill failed. And the reason is because the community, the larger community wants to preserve this last remaining shoreline open space as recreational area. And at the last meeting, our last board meeting, the question came up and Representative Ols was very receptive to the comments. So we would like to invite him back as a representative of our area, but also of the Native Hawaiian community to share information, experiences, and suggestions and solutions with our representative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. If anyone's interested, I have a, quite a bit of background on that.
He's here.
Oh, okay, great. Rep?
Hi, good evening. Hi, Michelle. Sorry, I, my children are doing a science experiment. They built a volcano and we're in the middle of of launching the volcanoes. Yeah, my apologies. Hi. So Michelle, just answer your question. Yes, the bill, the bill died. And again, I'm impartial to it. It wasn't, I don't feel, that's not my neighborhood, so I didn't feel good speaking on behalf, but because I was part of the Native Hawaiian caucus that pushed that goal forward. I spoke in my, you know, my limited capacity. And, you know, it's good. It died. It allows more discussion and maybe another alternative for Oha to be able to take land someplace else that might be a little bit more feasible to their goals. And that way, we can help keep that green space, too, at the same time. So it bought us another year.
Absolutely. And it has to be in the appropriate zoning, which Kakahakamakai was not. Kakahakamakai was not zoned for residential under the HCD. And, you know, we'd love to work with you. I've been involved with this since 2005 with the master plan for Kakahakamakai. And this has to be an ultimate solution for our Native Hawaiian community. First and foremost, as well as appropriate zoning for our island. So please, join us in working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would like to also give a little bit of my background. I'm also the chair right now of Surf Rider Oahu. I was involved with the Friends of Koalas on fighting against this bill. I did a lot of research to figure out what was going on there. And I, there is a environmental hazard report that was done in June of 2009. I have a copy if anybody's interested. And it details exactly, they did some very surface testing of the soils all over that entire area. It used to be, they call it a brownfield. It was a, it was a landfill where a lot of toxic waste was dumped there. And they capped it, put cement over it, and then said it was good. But it's not good. It's a very environmentally sensitive spot if you start drilling into into that land for, you know, pilings for any building. It's dangerous. It, it risks hurting the ocean. And also, in that hazard report, they very specifically state, no residential home should be built on that toxic soil. So knowing that, I think it would be, if I was, I think that that should be taken into consideration as well.
Mahalo, Acting Chair. I totally support what you're saying. I know a lot about this through the Department of Health Records. The toxic land, the distribution of toxins, if it were penetrated by piles for high-rise buildings of 400 feet, which are their proposing. Let's work together on this. We have a lot to contribute. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of groups involved, too. Yes, thank you. And if anyone wants a copy of that report, I have it electronically.
And I guess just as a, just a real quick, because I saw you guys getting ready to move on, so just a real fast report. So I think Tina kind of hit the nail on the head pretty good already. So we, we just started hearing Senate bills in our committees this week. The crossover has been accomplished and now the Senate is listening to our bills. So my only report from my own decking is HB 943, which would be a homeless triage center. Thankfully, it's going to be heard on Monday in the Senate and hopefully, you know, pass the Senate and continue the discussion. But I had a bunch of bills this session that were directly related to homelessness. Some of them were feel-good bills and some of them were a little bit more spicy. Fortunately, we pulled a bunch to work on. And I just wanted to kind of circle back to what that, the discussions were talking, that were happening earlier about the homeless situations in the neighborhoods that you folks live in. And, you know, it's, it's a very dynamic and multifaceted problem. And I, a lot of the ordinances that we have to work with in terms of moving them around are enforced by the city. And the reality is they, just from my own personal experience, you know, working as a social service provider with homeless for the last 10 years, is we tend to just shuffle bodies around. Diamond Head for my entire time in that service was always a hotspot for people who were using substances. It tended to be the almost like a claw papa of you're really bad. So you, you kind of hid away up on the slopes of Diamond Head, out of sight from, you know, people on the street. I was actually out there with Chao, the Chao Project during the outreach when basically it was the last major outreach event on the slopes where a guy in a gas mask with a machete and a katana came out and chased us off the mountain. You know, we have to get the, the resources in place. And part of it is the city and part of it's the state. When we talk about the post-grants pass that the mayor's rep was talking about, HPD has talked about how they would like fresh legislation because certain statutes that are in place currently have lawsuits against them, filed by the ACLU, and they want something post-grants pass to basically be a new thing. And that was part of the effort of what this legislative session was supposed to be for me. But, you know, there's a lot, there's new people in charge in the city and at the state level or the coordinators for this. And, you know, hopefully, the city council will move to to come up with something. But we just keep shuffling people around. So if they're not in Waikiki, they're gonna be Diamond Head. Diamond Head, they're gonna be in Kapahulu, Kameki. If they're not there, they're gonna come over to Muleli and Makali. They're gonna go to downtown and they're just gonna kind of cycle around. So we have to find places to be able to put them. If they are breaking a law, we have to, actions need to have consequences. If they have a mental health or substance abuse issue, we have to have the facilities available for them to be removed off the street for their safety and for the public safety and be able to put someplace. And hopefully, this triage center will help in that continuum of care because we already have the MH1 process that allows people that are displaying behaviors and being endangered to some, themselves or others, to be detained and be taken to the Behavior Health Crisis Center in Evilay. This would be the next piece. After they're cycled out, after about 24 hours, they can go to this triage center and hopefully continue their substance abuse treatment or the mental health treatment. So hopefully you guys can support it in the Senate on Monday. But I'm free to take any questions. Sorry to take so much time.
No, thank you very much. Any questions? Oh, yeah, we have a woman coming up.
Hi, I'm so glad to see you, Ikai. I met you at the mayor's meeting in Manoa last April.
Yes, I remember, I remember you, you spoke earlier.
Actually afterwards, because I didn't want to hold up the meeting, but I wanted to mention that I'd like to go speak to Ikai down at the Capitol and that if they're speaking of all these homeless, you know, ideas and plans, then we need to, you know, get you in there with your your social worker background because he has a good point. He says, you know, instead of just on the news, big local brothers are tossing couches and, you know, it's a pigsty and everyone's like, yeah, finally cleanup Diamond Head. They're all at Kahali Beach Park now. But, you know, and consequences, that's a big one. I have a lot to catch you up on because you heard me speak to the mayor about that corner. That's where I ended up being assaulted. So it's a personal thing for me now. But I do like that idea and I would like to come down and, and, and hear more about it because I, I like the solution of it. Not that they're gonna take it. And everyone says, well, grants pass and all this, but we also need to work at the, the most traumatic part of these assaults has been afterwards and being in the court and seeing what a joke, what a joke it is. That, you know, my assailant was released on $10 bail. That's, that's not even a Burger King sandwich or something. And over and over, just release, no consequences, talking about a beach cleanup or a park cleanup, whatever happened to that, by the way? Community service? Do they have any of that anymore?
Oh, yeah, we had, there's a lot of beach cleanups throughout the island, yeah.
I'm, I never see anybody, like back in the day, you know, cleaning up the beach because I'm talking, speaking of the trash. And you would know, being part of the Surf Rider.
Yeah, no, we have a lot of, we have one, one or two every month and then sustainable coastlines.
I'm sorry, no, I meant for the, for the people that are arrested, you know, for them to, because they just say, oh, they don't have money. So just let them free. I don't have money either, but I mean, everyone just gets out for free and 46 arrests? I mean, that's two years. I don't even know what five years that she's been here is. And that's our resources. And anyway, I'm sorry, I know, I have so much to say about it, but I'm so glad to see you here and I'll talk to you again in the future. I think it's a great idea.
Call me, come on down.
Thank you. Anyone else in house? How about online? Okay, no more? All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming here. Then we go on to the, this board business must have been for, from last time. Let's see. The Board Committee reports. I have nothing new on the environment, parks and recreation, Margaret? I don't, okay, we'll go on to Michelle. What?
It said nothing to report right now.
All right, thank you. How about planning and zoning, Michelle?
Well, I'm a little confused here because we had a joint committee meeting with the lead committee as transportation and public safety.
Yeah, I, you know.
And planning and zoning, of which I'm chair. And I'm not, I'm not sure what this committee is, parks, recreation, and environment, or it's, has it been dissected to just environment with Arlene, you as chair? But we all got together with Roger Martin of DTS.
I think this needs, I think this is, needs to be reworked. As far as I know, nothing. As far as I know, nothing's changed, Margaret.
We have.
Or Michelle.
We have minutes that just went out on this for your approval as a chair of environment. But as lead chair, Margaret, for transportation, public safety, and which I already reviewed as chair of planning and zoning. So the minutes have now gone out and been distributed at first from Winston, who did an AI version, and Kendrick Wong, our new Ben, board member, who actually did a recording, sorry, the recording, and another AI version. So we consolidated those two versions into what we perceived as the minutes. So the three chairs need to get together to review and present these minutes online for the record through the Neighborhood Commission Office.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I think, I think this, this board business area needs to be looked at more closely and, like you said, update the minutes and have it ready for the next board meeting. And let's see. The, so the traffic and public safety, Margaret, we, we're, I think we've covered that previously. Ongoing concerns.
We did, and we all have the meeting, or the meeting minutes done as soon as Audrey reviews them.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Pulled them back from Curtis because she had wanted to finish them.
Oh, okay.
Review them.
Yeah. Well, I do want to mention the ongoing concerns regarding the traffic calming because I know we had the meeting with Roger Morton, and I have seen some emails from a neighbor, Andrea. And he has asked Roger as to when he could have another update as to the studies that they're doing on the comp, putting in speed hubs and a crosswalk on Diamond Head.
Is that Alexi?
Yes, Alexi.
Alexi. Yeah, that was the objective of the meeting with DTS.
Yeah, and that, they're working on it. We, we just haven't gotten any more updates on it. But I know that they are still.
The one month period of working with a state DOT and getting back to us has expired. And we are now looking at additional information from DTS.
Okay, great. Okay, and then, and our next, the next item was the, we request for improved pedestrian safety at Fourth Avenue. And did we discuss that, didn't we? Yeah, we'll have to do it in the committee. All right, so now I think we can go on to the board sub-district reports. St. Louis Heights, Julia?
The meeting for St. Louis Heights Community Association that had been scheduled for Monday, the 10th this month, has been moved two weeks to the, Monday, the 24th at Hokalani Elementary School. And I believe it'll start a little early. It's planned to be a meet and greet, so it should be started around 6:00.
Great, thank you. Kapahula Subdistrict 2?
Nothing much to say.
Okay, thank you. Diamond Head Subdistrict 3, Linda? Is Linda online?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. The only thing that hasn't been discussed so far, I think, is I was corresponding with Marilyn. I forget her last name, but she's very, she comes to all our meetings and talks a lot. She helped us a lot with the Laiahe Avenue problem to check on the Kaniina Street, the people that have bought the land there at the house, building house on that street. And I got a very nice reply from her niece that Marilyn has now passed on. So those of you that know her, wish her well. And I responded in kind and just wanted, if you want to say anything to the family, just address, oh, yeah, Marilyn Mick's email address. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Yeah, Marilyn, she was a pretty active part of the Diamond Head Community Garden as well. Okay, so reports of board members attending other board and public meetings. Anybody have anything to report? Okay, Laura?
I would like to add one thing on the mayor's report about the art through town. In Foster Botanical Garden, there are three artists that have their work there. And so if you take a tour through the garden, you can see their work, too.
Great, thank you. Someone's crunching away over there. Okay. Any, anybody online have anything they want to report? None? Okay, report, all right. Approval of board meeting written summaries of board meeting videos and meeting recording timestamps. Are we ready to vote, to vote on any of these?
Vice Chair.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to vote?
I move.
Oh. Yeah, yes.
To approve the written summaries as drafted and posted on the NCO website for the previous March, September, October, November, December, January and February minutes, meetings.
Here, I call for discussion.
Okay, Linda?
We'll wait for a second.
Okay, let's go second?
I'll second so we can have a discussion.
Okay, second by night.
I would like to say something in the discussion. And the places where the meeting refers us to go online to see comments and discussion, et cetera, about whatever is on the agenda, I would rather take up that space with some of the comments or discussion or which way it leaned or more, more against or more pro, if you want to make it that simple and only take up room for four words. I, I would really appreciate that because I don't feel like, we have a four-page agenda and then four-page allowance for minutes. So rather than putting the onus on us like a self-serving checkout station, we have to go look it up if we want to know anything about what the questions and comments are, which is the meat of the meeting to me. So I would like to ask for that to be more followed in the future because there's a lot of blank space. So I would like to see more of the, about the discussion. If you can just put more for than against or, you know, whatever. Just not controversial, I guess. I would really appreciate that. Until something like that happens, I'll be voting against the minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Anybody else have a comment?
Acting Chair.
Michelle?
Yes, I was previous secretary for the board, and I totally oppose this motion by the current secretary, who apparently is not running for the board again. The reason and justification to substantiate my opposition to these minutes as constructed under the direction of the executive secretary of the Neighborhood Commission Office, Lloyd Yonanaka, to his, to his staff, they do not and have elected not to include, as Linda has mentioned, the community's and board's comments, concerns, questions, and official answers from the representatives in our minutes. This is a great transgression of the open meetings law. And to not have this in our minutes as summarized, it is reflected in the minutes. It does not have to be verbatim, but to not have any of our board's questions, concerns, and the official answers, and the community's questions and concerns, and any answers provided by the city, state, or federal representatives. This is a complete flaw in our minutes. So I am not going to approve any of these minutes until they are revised with all concerns, questions, answers, and any other information as summarized to be reflected in these minutes per the state statute, section 92-9A. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else want to comment on the minutes? Okay.
Yes, Vice Chair.
All right. You're, you can speak.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to point out for the newer members that this board has been, has been following the Sunshine Law by having the NCO assistant takes the minutes, drafts the minutes, and posting the recorded minutes on, on the internet and a summary, a written summary of those minutes with timestamps to quickly access the parts of the recording that are of interest and also all of the items on the agenda, all of the votes, who voted what, the motions. So this complies with the Sunshine Law. And I think it's the best way to do it because the, the recording is the most accurate, fair, detailed, complete way of providing the minutes to the public. Because if you, whenever you're trying to convert all the oral testimony into writing, you involve a, it's not a transcript, so it's a summary. And that involves interpretation. And it's subject to, to opinion and, and characterization. And it's just, and it takes too long to, to create and, and, and edit and agree on. The minutes have to be posted within 40 days of the, of the meeting. That's the Sunshine Law. And the way that the NCO is doing it now, I think, is the, the best way to do it and really the only way that we can do it as the volunteer board that we are. So I, I support the approval of the summaries.
Madam Chair. Despite the wavy-wavy explanation, we have, we do have recordings. However, people have difficulty navigating on the recordings even though they're summaries with timestamps for subject matters. And when they review the written minutes, which are required, written minutes must be accurate, which they are not so far because they do not include some reflections of community, comments, concerns, questions, and official answers, nor board comments, concerns, questions, and official answers. Therefore, they are defective. And the problem here is, yes, you have a recording, you have summarized minutes that do not include any community input or board input. They just include the presentations of officials, whatever statements that are made. They're defective. And we need to have more accurate representation of our minutes in accordance with the state statute, not some executive, executive secretary's redefinition of policies, which he has attempted to make. Therefore, I object to our current secretaries of, so let's just, well, I won't mention.
Okay, I think we know your position very well, Michelle, and we know.
I was previous secretary. I know the law. I know, I know the procedure. And as of 2023, when the new executive secretary came on, he tried to create new policies for our boards, his own administrative policies that undercut our board procedure as it was established from the beginning. And here we are with a secretary supporting that. I object. And I do not approve these minutes because of the content that was eliminated as reflective of our board meetings. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, we, we know your position very well. So I think, is there anybody else who wants to give their inputs on this?
Daisy? Right.
Daisy?
Thank you, Vice Chair. As a member of the community, we have a lot of concerns brought to the board. Those concerns are not written on the minutes. I was surprised that all of a sudden, we see the wording, but if a person that just has no idea of the community, they'll understand what was brought up, what concerns are brought up, what problems we have, what solutions we have. I agree, it is completely different from years past where at least, at least the public knew what we're talking about. If you talk about DPP, great. But then, unless you know what the issues are, committee has no idea of what's going on, and that's not right. Or for the legislators, they need to know the concerns of the community. So I agree, we should be a little bit broadened. It doesn't have to be verbatim, but it could just say what the concerns are and questions for the community because that's what they need to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Daisy, I have a quick question for you. Do you have access to video?
The, the one that the NCO shows?
Yes. The video of the, the recordings of the meetings?
Oh, yes, yes. But the thing is, I'm saying the minutes itself, a person that does not have computer access, will have no idea what we're talking about, what's happening in the community. I think that's what they would know. Yeah, thank you.
All of our written summaries are available on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. And our YouTube channel has all of the recordings of the meetings, as well as Olelo. Olelo does televise and archive it on their website.
Yeah, and I would like. Yeah, and I, I would like to mention that, you know, for people who don't have computers, I've been on travel before where I was in emergency and I needed a computer and I went to a public library. That's always a great option.
Yes, but not everybody can use a computer. Thank you.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that I love our public libraries.
Um, Madam Acting Chair, the problem is the summaries do not include.
All right, we'll vote.
Okay, I think what, we all know everyone's positions. I think it is time for a vote.
Approval of all the written summaries um, listed on the agenda from March 2024 to February 2025. Allen?
Aye.
Aye. Boidle?
Aye.
Aye. Hacina?
No.
No. Miranda?
Aye.
Aye. Knight?
Aye.
Aye. Mattson?
No.
No. Murchy?
Stain.
Epstein. Saint Dennis?
Aye.
Aye. Velasco?
Aye.
Aye. Welch? Absent. Oh, Whitesell absent. Bruce Wong?
Aye.
Aye. Kendrick Wong? Absent. And Linda Wong?
Aye.
Aye. On a vote of eight to two.
I'm sorry, can I say nay?
Nay?
Yes.
On a vote of seven ayes, three nays and one abstention, uh, the motion is not adopted.
All right, um, I have one letter here that um, that was addressed to Winston and came right now. I should, I should read it real quickly. Um, the Department of Transportation Services would like to inform the Diamond Head Kapahulu St. Louis Neighborhood Board Number Five that we will be installing Refuge Collection Parking Restriction Signs on the Makai side of Herman Street stating, no parking Monday and Thursday until refuge is picked up. As such, we have issued a work order to the Department of Facility Maintenance to install these signs. For the status updates regarding the completion, please contact the Department of Facility Maintenance at 808-768-3622. And that was written uh, by Roger Morton. Um, it is, let's see, on the Makai side of Herman Street. H E R M A N. I don't know where that's at. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, I think, um, all right, I think that is the conclusion of everything on the agenda. And, yes, of course.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to join your board. Um, and there is a full lunar eclipse going on outside. Right now it's peaking at 8:58, so let's get out of here.
I agree. Let's, let's, maybe we could, can we look at, at it and then clean up? All right, let's, okay, reading adjourned. All right, I'll see, we'll see everyone in a month.